Commissioner Howell will at some point be joining. Nicole, would you give Chairman a heads up when Commissioner Howell's here?
So, good morning, Commissioner. We have two main items today to discuss. One, what Lindsay's at the podium to discuss here is the current ARPA expenditure plan going into '23 and '24. This was discussed at the bench a month ago now where the Commission had some questions and asked for the opportunity to get to drill them a little bit on the line-by-line basis of what we're continuing to spend ARPA funds on. And then I know she wants to talk a little bit about grant processes and procedures when this is done, but this is the main presentation this morning. And the reason we have a room full of people is all of, most of these people have some lineup here somewhere that in case you have questions, operationally, they'll be able to answer your questions. So with that, Lindsay, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you and welcome everybody that's joined us this morning. So, thank you.
And not only are they here to provide questions, I'm also going to call them to the podium to speak here kind of line by line to give you some details here. But before I do that, and these lovely people who are here to talk through things, I just wanted to recap a few things with you. Can everybody hear me okay in the back? Okay, I see thumbs up. So Tom's right, we did present an updated spending plan to you all at the Commission meeting on February 8th. We had a number of follow-up questions that came up through that conversation. And so we promised to do a deep dive with you in a staff meeting setting to make sure you were comfortable, to take your comments and feedback, and then we would bring back a spending plan to you for consideration. So this is just the second step in that process. We will still plan to come back to you with a spending plan based on the feedback we hear from you today or in the coming days and weeks. So we did ask every group that is listed on your spend plan, and you now have a large version of the spend plan that looks like this in front of you, to give us some information on five questions. And those five questions that we distilled from your conversation on the 8th was what are the basis for the FTEs and the dollars requested for 2023 and 2024? What progress has been made or how effective have these programs been at meeting the goals that were stated for 2021 and 2022? What goals or objectives are planned for the 2023 and 2024 allocations? What harm would come from either not funding the program entirely or somehow reducing in scale the amount of funding that's going to the programs? And then finally, because we are getting closer and closer to the end of ARPA, what cost expectations are there past 2024 for any of these projects? And so today's presentation will include speakers from almost all departments to explain the high points of that info for all of those questions that we asked them. What I would propose to you is that you let us get through all of the speakers first before asking questions. And the reason I say that is because many programs correlate to others throughout. And so some of the questions that you will likely have may get answered through the course of the conversation. Now, if that doesn't work, it's your meeting, you do what you would like. But I will tell you that there likely will be some additional conversation as we go through this. So just a quick refresher on where we've been. ARPA, the ARPA we know was passed in March of 2021. At that time, they gave us an interim final rule. We had comments that were due back on that interim final rule by July 16th, 2021, and the expectation was that within a month or two, by late September at the latest, we would have a final rule that we could use to guide spending decisions. And so you all approved a 2021 spending plan under that interim final rule to address some of our more urgent needs on July 21st, 2021. There were some updates made on July 27th and September 8th, and of course, we get to the end of September and still no final rule. So the BOCC approved the continuation of that 2021 urgent plan through the first quarter of 2022. That approval was done on December 8th. And of course, the final rule then was issued January 6th, 2022, so three and a half months later than expected. We evaluated that final rule after it came out in January, and we launched internal and external needs assessments concurrently so that we could try and be quick, because even then, 2024, the end of the term felt pretty quick. Well, unfortunately, we received more than $300 million in asks at that time. And bear in mind, we had already allocated premium pay and some other funds, so we were down to a little more than $60 million to allocate, and you had $300 million worth of asks. So the focus was to continue on those more urgent-type needs internally, recognizing that carers, the county put out more than half of its carers allocations to the community. And so the spending plan was adopted for the rest of 2022 through 2024 on March 23rd, 2022. We revisited that plan in July of last year. We revisited again in November when we got some bids that came in higher than expected. And then we brought back this for the update in February, but understandably, after a year, we have some questions about what's in the plan, why it's there, and so that's why we're here today. So the programs that we're going to be discussed, or that are going to be discussed, are listed here. There's three pages. The dollars that have actually been spent on these programs are listed here in the middle column. The FTEs for 2023 are listed next to that in the darker gray. The spending amounts for 2023 and 2024 as proposed today are listed. And then you will see the total of the actual spending plus 2023 and 2024 budgets here in this white column. Now, next to that, the next two numeric columns show you what had been in the plan the last time this was revised in November of 2022 and the change that has occurred. Now, for the most part, those changes are because we didn't spend personnel funding or something like that. But you're also going to see that since we talked last month, a number of changes have been made, and I want to highlight those before we get into the details. The first major adjustment is on your third page. And this is row 29. With the permission of all of the folks sitting in here, if there were items that caught your attention, for example, high-touch-point cleaning, communication spending, some of those things that the money was really more there to support if there was a COVID surge, because obviously COVID has eluded prediction at every turn, folks have volunteered to move those dollars out of those specific buckets and into what is called a COVID surge contingency. So there's a little more than $500,000 in budget authority that has been reallocated there in this updated proposal. And what we are proposing with that, and you'll see it in footnote C here, is that instead of the Commission having the authority over that particular contingency so that we have to come to you through a business agenda item, allow the county manager to access those funds if there is a surge and report to you in a day or a week, similar to what we do with budget transfers now, that that has occurred and the basis for why it has occurred. And so you'll see in the notes on row 29 what those funding buckets are from, and we will get into those details as we move through that program list. But that's the number one significant change I want to highlight. The second major change that I want to highlight is the fact that the courthouse remodel project has increased by about $600,000 due to the addition of space on the first floor for Sheriff Judicial for their additional positions that they require, because there are now new courtrooms, which requires more staff to move folks around. So that is now included in the courthouse remodel. There are two smaller adjustments.
What line is that?
That will, and we'll get into.
It's very helpful that you have these lines.
I was trained well by a county manager many years ago. Row 21. But we will get to those details as we move through this. While I have the podium, I want to make sure to highlight a couple of these big changes. A couple of smaller adjustments. Corrections has actually taken an FTE off of their request, and they are absorbing that work through their operating budget. So now, when we get to their part of the discussion, you'll see that there's only one FTE there. And then after conversations with several of you after the ARPA discussion in February, we have renamed the contingency in row 28 as CIP to really hone in on the fact that we are anticipating potential increases in the various construction-related projects that are included throughout this plan. And so we want to make sure that you all understand that that's how we're viewing this and also make that cleaner and clearer to the public who have used this document. Because once you approve it, a simplified version of this is what will be posted out on the county's website. So with that, if it's okay with you, Chairman and Commissioners, we will jump right into the plan itself. I've asked folks to spend maybe two to three minutes just kind of walking through their asks with you, so we will go just right down the list here, and I'll try and follow along here on this sheet. And so the first bucket we will talk about is public health. And Tim Kaufman is here to talk about the health department.
One quick question, quick question. Okay, so these last two columns, the of numbers, at the very end, the second to the last is the fall of '22. That's our last revision that adds up to the $100 million, $235. And then the column to the right of that is since the fall of '22, these are the adjustments up and down, and that's why there's a zero at the end. So there's zero impact.
Because it's a net change.
Net change of zero.
Right.
But so we will be hearing the pluses and minuses this morning. Thank you. And that's for everybody else too, besides me. Thank you. Morning, Tim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager, representing the Health Department today. Lindsay had five questions. I think I've got them here. I'll go through them, but she also said two minutes. So progress, we, I think you've experienced the response that we had to the pandemic. We had, we were the highest-volume vaccinator in the community. We were the highest-volume tester in the community. We supported the community in many, many different ways. We partnered with a lot of different organizations. But we supported businesses in particular going onsite to Spirit, Tech Strong, and places like that, and making sure that their workforces were able to continue to be successful in their environment. So the Health Department did a public health response that also had a significant economic impact response as well. So that's the progress that we've made. Adrian let me know that the pandemic is over and that we've transitioned into the endemic phase, but we still are responding to the, so there's 30 positions in this ask. Five of those positions are tied to the response. We continue to have about 150 positive cases in the community right now. We continue to have about 150 positive cases in the community right now. So the response component is primarily disease investigator. So this is still, COVID is still a reportable disease according to KDHE, so we need to follow up on those positive cases. And much of that work now is related to nursing facilities, particularly because we're still seeing clusters in those places, but some schools, that sort of thing. But that is, the primary response is related to those positive cases, and we want to really follow up on those clusters and that sort of thing. The rest of the positions are in what we call the recovery phase. And so we need to respond and we need to recover. The Health Department spent two and a half to three years not doing traditional Health Department work because they were responding to the pandemic. So there's built-up workload for them to do. There is also a lot of recovery to the community. So we need to rebuild the Health Department and have them do the work that they've done. We need to do data analysis so that the next, whenever you have an event like this, you need to track what happened, track how you responded, track how, what the response was to your response. And so there's a tremendous amount of data gathering, data analysis, and then making that data available to lots of different people in the community, but particularly healthcare providers. But it also helps guide the community in preparation for what happens the next time there's a pandemic. There will be another one. We don't know what it is, but when it hits, we want to be ready to respond, so.
Contrary to Lindsay's suggestion, I don't like the idea of waiting till the end because I got questions to come up as we go along, and I'm not going to remember them at the end, and we got trades everybody back up there, so.
She qualified. It's your meeting, Commissioner, so you do what you want to do.
Okay. Well, the disease investigation portion of it, I thought that was long to the state. You said that we have a bunch of people that are doing disease investigation.
We have three additional. So we've got three additional staff.
But doesn't that belong to the state?
It does not at this point. They do the follow-up. We do the investigation, they do the follow-up with those folks. It's a shared responsibility with state, but we're still responsible for doing the initial investigation. When we get a positive test, we make contact with that person, talk to them about their response, what do they need, are they going to be okay? And then the state does the contract tracing after the fact. So we're not doing that, but we are doing the investigation because the disease is here in our community.
So past 2024, you've got 30.7 people right now. And I don't know that I heard what you're going to do past 2024.
I was going to get, that number goes to zero. We would like to consider some of it as contingency. If we have to respond because of a spike, then we may bring additional positions on. But right now, our proposal is, and what we talked about back in the summer, July, I think we did a presentation, we talked about having 33 positions in '22, or in '23 and '24, that shrunk just a little bit, and then beyond '24, it was at zero. We're still targeted to be at zero. We, instead, for '23, instead of having 33 positions, we're down to just over 30. So we have already recognized that some of those positions we don't need, and we'll continue to adjust as we go through. Again, one of the issues that we're going to start to face is people aren't going to want to take temporary jobs, and so that's going to be an issue as well. So I, unless something dramatically changes in the community, I'm not convinced that we're going to spend every one of these dollars that's allocated here. But we won't know until we've worked through this time period. The harm, Lindsay asked to talk about the harm that happens if we don't respond this way. The harm is that we're unprepared for the next pandemic. What we've seen with other pandemics, H1N1 was the most recent significant pandemic prior. There was a lot of federal money to respond to that. Over time, that federal money diminished pretty rapidly, and then there was a 10-, 12-, 15-year period of time where there wasn't a lot of money provided to do public health emergency planning, and the world got caught short, and we would like to not do that again. So we're going to do as much planning and processing that we can. And again, learn everything that we can from the experience that we've just had. That's the value of the data analysis. But that's the harm, is we'll be unprepared for the next one. And then in answer to that fifth question, we don't anticipate any of these positions going beyond 2024.
What happens, Tim, Lindsay, if we don't use these funds, as you mentioned, do they get reallocated to another line item? Is there?
So that really is at the discretion of the Commission, but what we have proposed at this time is yes, we do a periodic review of where we stand with these programs, what the spending looks like, what trends are happening, and if there are opportunities to reallocate to other higher needs within the program, we can certainly do that. Or what we would propose doing is shifting those funds to the CIP contingency. And I do think that as bids start to come in on some of these projects and we start to see change orders happening and some of those other things, I think there will, within a matter of months, there will be some demands on that.
Are you forecasting when that decision, I mean, we don't want to get to the point toward the fourth quarter of next year, and then we're like, oh my gosh, we've got to use this money. So you're anticipating this process on a monthly-quarterly basis and making adjustments as we go?
So we, in finance, and we'll talk about this when we get to the grants portion, but we have a team that receives an ARPA expense report on a weekly basis. And so at least on a weekly basis, we're looking at these dollars and seeing how they're doing. And if there are, there is a process, I approve every expenditure that comes through. So if there are things that I start to see that are making me nervous, that will prompt a revision to this plan. Or most likely what will happen is we'll go through on a quarterly basis and bring recommendations to you if necessary. Or we will get to the retreat next year, we will see what that balance looks like, and we will try and integrate that into a budget process. So if we have a balance that's available for use to help with other CIP projects that we're trying to complete or those types of things, we can come to you and have that discussion. But for now, I will continue to advocate to keep, keep that funding in contingency so that if we need it, it's there. Otherwise, we're having to go to the general fund, and that's not necessarily, I think, what we would want to do.
I understand. On the, Tim, you had mentioned 150 active cases and investigations to go with that. The vast majority of people are taking home tests now for COVID, I'm assuming? So I mean, are.
We're still seeing 150 positive cases. The information comes to us through self-report. Some of the, as I said, many of these cases now are in institutional settings, and so that's going to be reported, particularly the nursing home ones are going to be reported.
Just one final comment on the Health Department portion of it, and it may be later on in here in the briefing, but the warehouse report, we can leave it now, hopefully that's someplace else.
Row eight, we will have that in conversation.
That, to me, the pandemic is pretty well over. We don't know what we don't know because there are a lot of home tests. So I am not that interested in spending a whole lot of money on 30 people if we have other higher priorities because the pandemic is over, and again, we don't know how many other people are out there. So we need to concentrate on how we prepare for the next one rather than keep fighting the current one.
Yeah, and I agree. And as I mentioned, the balance is five, which will soon be three in the response phase, and the rest is planning and recovery.
Okay, so we will move to the.
Just a second. Commissioner Howell, do you have a question? Let you answer. I know you're following.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
No.
Barely.
Okay, well.
Now we can, now we're good.
Okay, great. I was wondering, on our federal platform, are we asking for another year of spending opportunity?
Yes, and that's largely related to the state mental health hospital.
All right, I agree with some of the comments made here. I think some of this stuff is really not necessarily spending, but I need to see this stretched out to the end with this type of spending. If there's anything we can do that's, I guess, towards the mental health possible, things like that, I'm much less see money spent that way. I don't feel that I like that you're painting and marketing and that type of thing on this list, although we got, I could be integrated before. Maybe that just seems like, seems like maybe not the best use of money, but that's just, you know, I can't say too much here, but I don't really have any questions, I guess. Thank you for the conversation.
Okay, the next item on your list is emergency management, but you'll notice that there is no funding for that. That position you all funded through the general fund. So because there is no request for that, we will move right down to EMS. I know there were a lot of questions on this at the time. It's a logistics position, and I think Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis, you both had questions about what this position is doing. So we will let Chief Lannerman come and speak to that.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Real quick, I'll kind of give a little synopsis of this position. This is a logistics technician position. It's a pre-mission critical position that makes sure that equipment and supplies are available to our field crews so they can deliver patient care. This position also works with internal and external stakeholders, vendors, if you will, to ensure that the logistics needs are met. This position was asked in the decision package prior to COVID and has been funded with the ARPA funds. As you know, call volume is still increasing, the number of respiratory patients is increasing with cares funds. We did purchase a lot of equipment, ventilators, IV pumps, things like that that require maintenance and care that this position also helps out with now. So as far as answering some of the questions, what harm would come, I go back to the amount of equipment that was, that was purchased that this position is assisting in maintaining. It also helps us prepare, like talked earlier, like Tim talked, for the future, if future preparedness for another type of emergency. Make sure we have adequate staffing, a large cache of supplies during COVID. We've had supply chain interruptions. We've had to do, try to find medications, supplies, equipment wherever we could find it. So I'm like, we would like this position to continue even after the ARPA funds are completed. Like I said, it supports our ongoing mission of taking care of our field crews with supplies and maintenance and things like that. And also do have Division Chief Logistics, Paul Gibson, here. If you have any questions, he might be able to answer, help me answer those a little
Commissioner Howell, any question? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. So our next speaker will be Elizabeth Wingo with Risk Management. This is the risk fit testing position, and I will let her tell you all about how this fits into our new safety policies and the details behind this.
Morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, Elizabeth Wingo, you're Risk Management Coordinator. I also brought some show-and-tell items that I will be happy to pass around. So the fit testing position is tied in part to the Respiratory Protection Program, which is policy 2.520 that the Commission approved in December of 2021. And this allowed us to create a universal respiratory response program for the county. Prior to COVID, different departments were doing different things, using different fit testing methodology, and they had different standards for how frequently they did fit testing and what types of masks that they used. So by bringing it all under one program, we've created consistency. So this is a safety program, and it's using an OSHA best practice model. That way, we can ensure that we are fit testing our employees with the proper mask so they're not getting exposed, we're not having staffing problems when that next pandemic comes around. So in addition to just fit testing staff, one of the things that the fit tester has done is done research into improved mask models, and that way we can be supplying our staff with the best mask for the work that they're doing. And that's the examples I brought today. So this one is a flat fold. So one of the issues during the pandemic, in case you have already forgotten. So one of the issues during the pandemic, in case you have already forgotten, about the fun dome shaped mask or some of the kind of corner, flat fold ones. They came in these boxes and we had to, emergency management had to separate them out and ship them out to different departments. So that creates kind of some sanitation issues. This being a flat fold, it's easier for folks to store on a daily basis, put it into our ambulances so they're ready, they're deployable, and you don't have to worry about pulling them apart and getting them dirty. I personally have bought in some of these for myself and they work wonderfully. They're great for travel because they fold back down. And then one of the things that we're using ARPA money for in conjunction with emergency management is building resiliency in the types of masks that we buy. And one of the big things here is, we call this the bug mask internally because it's got a fun little quirky design to it. We've got several different models of these that we're going to be rolling out to our first responder departments. These are reusable P100s. So not just your N95, P100, so it filters at approximately 100% of the particulates in the air. Again, how do we improve that safety that we're delivering to staff? It's reusable, it is comfortable, the filters can be removed and sanitized and then replaced once they kind of reach end of life. And it comes with different types of filters for different environmental hazards. It comes with a built-in, some of the models have a built-in eyeglass component as well for fluid exposures, things like that. So that's what we're doing. It's a lot to stand up an OSHA program. And if we don't have the money to do this fit testing position, we won't be able to be compliant with the program, the safety program that you all approved in December of 21. And then we'd try to have to look for other ways to meet those requirements to make sure that we're keeping staff safe. We are already working with grants, management and finance to look for alternative funding because we would like to move this off the ARPA staffing table by the end of 24. And that's all I have.
I'm gonna hand out the people.
Yes.
Okay, any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Howell, I mean Dennis.
So this is a full-time position to do this?
Yes, it is.
We can't use train to trainer and let each department take care of trying to use their own individuals?
So before the pandemic, different departments were doing various types of fit testing. The problem was we had inconsistent methodology. We do have some folks throughout the county that can serve as emergency backups. But they now follow the methodology within the, the policy program that we've set forth. But it is a very time intensive program and process just because of the volume of employees who are within the respiratory protection program.
So this person's working 40 hours a week?
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
Doing fit testing on masks?
Yes.
I'm amazed.
I've got some questions on that, too. I want to be a good steward over these dollars and I guess I'm trying to understand, you made a comment that this is, this position is necessary because of a previously passed safety program? A fit test, so can you explain what they do? I guess I'm trying to understand, do they go to the different departments and make sure the masks are fitting appropriately? Is that what?
So the vast, so there are multiple components to what the fit tester does. So the first step in a OSHA compliant fit test respiratory protection program is all employees have to complete a medical evaluation questionnaire. So we have to prove that people are medically safe to wear the mask. That's a huge management component to this program. Communicating, scheduling, how those questionnaires go out, getting them back. There's a lot of audits that happen in this program as well. So once we get past the MEQ phase, then we move into the actual fit testing. And it can take anywhere from five to 20 minutes to fit test an employee because it's not just throwing one of these masks on them. We use a quantitative fit testing method using a machine that actually is measuring the difference of the quality of the air inside the mask and outside the mask to make sure that there is a quality seal on the employee's face. So the employee has to go through several types of physical demonstrations to prove that if they're bending down, it's not going to fall off their face, things like that. So it is time intensive when you think about, it can take between about five to 20 minutes. And because there's also an educational component as well for the OSHA requirement. You have to teach the employee how to put on the mask, how to take off the mask, what is the proper care, answer their questions and concerns. So it's very much a one-on-one in person and it is time consuming. Employees are out sick, they miss appointments, we have to go back and reschedule. So it, there's a lot to it.
Thank you.
So during the pandemic, we told 500,000 people in Sedgwick County that they had to wear a mask.
Yes.
And a lot of them wore the mask. But nobody did all this fit testing on 500,000 people. So I don't, I just am baffled on how that we're spending somebody 40 hours a week doing this when we have people all over the county that are wearing, some of them still wearing masks today. And we didn't do it for anybody else.
So this program did start earlier in the pandemic within the county structure. But it was, it's called test at time. So you do emergency fit testing. It didn't include all of the additional components that we're doing today as part of a long-term prevention strategy. So that's the difference. The fire district actually started the emergency fit testing program. And they were doing it with that sometimes between one and three staff who were providing fit testing services to the county. But they didn't have to do the medical questionnaires. The education component was shorter because it was that just in time fit test. Now we're moving beyond that to the full OSHA structure, making sure that everyone has the correct education. We've got the correct resources, you know, trying to build out just beyond the N95 to P100s that provide that better resiliency long-term. So it's just a, it's a, we've built off of something and now kind of taken it in a different direction.
And Elizabeth, can you, to the Commissioner's point, can you speak to the distinction between if I'm walking, if I'm sitting in my office or walking around you guys with a mask on, what's the distinction for me versus someone in EMS or fire who's providing patient care and the distinction between the types of masks we need?
Absolutely. So the general public was told to wear a mask. Those weren't fit tested and a fit test means that it is properly adhered to your face in a way that it can't let particles slip in or slip out, basically. So the importance for first responders to have that fit test is to ensure their personal health, health and safety, the health and safety of their families and the health and safety of the patients that they're providing care for. So this is a higher quality standard for both what type of masks they wear and how we ensure that they get to remain safe and go home at the end of the day.
And I would just add, when I was working at the hospital, this is something that we would do. Anybody who would be hired in that was going to work clinically with patients had to have a fit test. So this isn't something necessarily that's new that we've made up just for this pandemic, but it's something that's been going on as long as I know in our clinical setting. So something that is necessary, especially for those that are taking care of patients. I think it's, it's important that we're doing this.
You're still going to have to convince me, I'm a guy who tells.
Happy to be able to discuss with you more one-on-one. Absolutely fit test you, absolutely.
Can you, can you quantify that for Commissioner Dennis on how many employees? It's EMS, fire corrections, all the front facing employees? And then talk to him about, I mean, is it, it's not a one and done. It's a continual process.
Correct.
Can you maybe?
So we had every department go through hazard assessment to determine if their employees needed to be fit tested. And the program itself, the respiratory protection program divides departments into respiratory illness and environmental hazards. So we have departments like Fleet, Public Works and the Zoo who fall under needing protection from environmental hazards. And then everyone else is under respiratory. So this includes the sheriff's office, EMS, fire, corrections. And we've got comm care staff, health department, courthouse, police. I mean, it's a very extensive list. And under the OSHA standard, you're fit tested and then you are annually fit tested every single year because our faces change. Every time you break your nose or you lose a tooth or have a dental surgery, it can change the outward structure of your face that you may not notice, but it changes the way that mask is going to seal to your face. So that's part of the reason you do annual fit testing is to make sure that that person is current on the size and style of mask that's going to work best for them to keep them safe at work.
You're doing a really good job explaining this because I, when I read it, I, so this is specific. I think that's an important distinction, that this isn't COVID mitigation in as much as it's for public safety. Now, is fire, EMS, corrections, are they wearing masks on calls? Because I have.
When appropriate, it depends on the time to call.
Because I've toured all of them and the only place I've seen masks is in public safety at this point. But on calls, you're saying everyone's wearing a mask? I'm sorry, not public safety, public health department.
So part of this is for actual real-time field deployment now. And part of it is that building that resiliency plan. So when the next pandemic happens, comm care still has to provide mental health services. Every employee knows exactly what style and type of mask they're supposed to wear. They can pull them out of the cabinets, they're good to go, there's no delay in services. So part of this is the business continuity for the.
Fascinating. Well, I appreciate that distinction.
Okay, Elizabeth, thank you. That was extensive and, but we appreciate you, your explanation. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, my experience is exchange of, I've gone back several decades now doing chemical gear warfare training, flying in airplanes that are unpressurized, masks providing oxygen from here, doing my altitude testing. I could go on and on regarding that. So the way that Spirit, I should say, the way that Boeing managed this was they trained the employee how to check their mask. And once you, you do this once every couple of years, you can certify that you've gone through the training. The training lasted about an hour. And if you ever have a question, you can call someone up and refresh, if you will. But they have ways of testing those masks to make sure they, they work correctly. But, you know, I think the OMD ought to be the place where, or something like that, ought to be the place where we're training the employees on how to check fit their own masks. And this should be something they could have some, some personal responsibility to, you know, we would provide initial training and then we would have recurrent training. But it should not be, I have to agree with Commissioner Dennis, this is not a full-time position. This is just one type of training that goes along with all kinds of other training that these employees are going to be getting. And so, you know, and I have to also agree with Commissioner Baby. I've been on lots of these calls and I have yet to see, no offense to anybody, but I haven't seen anybody wear a mask. I did see some firefighters wear, you know, oxygen providing equipment when they went into a fire area. That's a different type of mask. And again, they, they check, they, they do a check seal or fit, fit check on their seals to make sure they're getting fresh air from their tanks or whatever. But that's not the same thing as respirator filter. And these N95 masks, they have to be bent and fitted to their face. And as soon as you take it off and you set it down, they can get rebent a little bit. They have to constantly adjust that potential. They, some people need to know how to do that. And rather than relying on a, on a certain FTE that doesn't score, then these are probably going to be trained on how to check their masks. So I don't think this is a full-time job.
Any other comments? Again, thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Okay, up next, another one that had a lot of questions during our conversation back in February. Our communications plan, I will point out that again, this is part of the COVID surge contingency. 130,000 has been moved from this line down to that COVID surge contingency. And so what you'll see today and hear from Seth is a slightly scaled back program. So with that, I turn it over to you and I think you have handouts too for this.
I do. I don't have fun show and tell, but I do have a handout with pretty pictures. So if you want to follow along, this gives a sense of what we've done already and our plans for the future. So our COVID-related communications basically fall into two categories. COVID vaccinations and Recovery Connect. And the focus shifted a bit through last year as we went along. Initially, our goal was to encourage people to get vaccinated. And we did that up until right about September when the new bivalent booster was approved. And then our focus really was to educate people why this booster is needed, why people need yet another COVID shot to protect them against the current variants. With Recovery Connect, initially our focus was just telling people what is it? Who does it help and what kind of resources are out there? Once some of those emergency assistance programs ran out, our focus now really is telling people about some of the long-term opportunities for training and education. So our strategy was to get our message out to a diverse range of populations in Sedgwick County and those most at risk, those being 65 and older for the COVID vaccinations. We created commercials and video commercials and graphics in multiple languages, English, Spanish and Vietnamese. And we ran those on multiple platforms. So traditional television, Spanish-speaking TV and radio. So that means Univision, Telemundo, La Raza, Radio Lobo. We also used a lot of social media. We did online ads, we did YouTube, we did streaming devices like Roku, Netflix, things like that. Newspaper ads, outdoor billboards and Wichita Transit bus signs. So signs on the outside of the buses and inside. I also arranged some live TV interviews to talk about Recovery Connect and some news stories. So in many ways, we really tried to hit people where they are, whether they're tuned into digital devices or not. For the first eight months, I handled the ad buys myself, which is pretty time consuming, trying to figure out the pricing and where to get the best deal and, and to reach your audience. In August, though, we contracted with a media buyer and they're called Lifeboat Create It. If you're not familiar with a media buyer, what they do, they don't produce the commercials, but they take our spots and figure out the best places to run those ads, ads to reach our intended audience. So the media buyer also then monitors the performance of those ads and makes changes if needed. So I feel like our campaign, one of the questions was whether we reached our goals. I do feel like it's been successful because the numbers show that we did reach our intended audience. So if you want to look on the back page, page one, I've got some metrics. And let me say from the outset, I don't want to flood you with a bunch of data. Our media buyer prepared these numbers. She pulled a few examples from different platforms. And some of the fields are empty because she only pulled relevant information, not all of the numbers. And some of the metrics don't apply to every platform. So if I can walk you through this a little bit, this is from the last quarter and these are our COVID vaccination ads that we're talking about. So under Facebook, reach is the number of individuals who see the ads. Impressions is the number of views. So one person could see our ad three times and those three views would count as impressions. But what's even better is engagements. That's when someone not only sees the ad, but does something with it. They like it, they share it, they click on a link to learn more. So those numbers are pretty good. We're reaching hundreds of thousands of people. If I can direct you then to YouTube, the next column, the impressions and engagements are good as well. But what's interesting on that is the interaction rate. That's defined as someone viewing at least half of our video. Now, keep in mind, our videos are only about 30 seconds. So you wouldn't think that'd be hard to get people to watch a 30-second video. But on social media and things, we've got a very short attention span. But in YouTube, the ads are skippable. So that's an even bigger task because most people can just click and skip the ad. But our interaction rate shows that almost 50% of people did watch at least half of our video. If you go down to view-through rate, that is people that watched the entire video. 10 to 15% is considered a good benchmark. Our ads were getting 28.5%. So again, we, we count that as a win. Display ads, the next column, those are online ads for websites. The impressions, we, we had over 2 million people see our ads. And engagements, they clicked on them over 9,000 times to learn more. The final column is OTT streaming. And this can be a little confusing. A lot of people don't know what that is. OTT stands for over the top. So that basically means it's internet streaming the program to your device. It's not cable, it's over the top. So we can put an ad in particular programming that we think our intended audience is going to watch. The important thing about this is these ads are not skippable. They're a captive audience. So that's why you'll see at the bottom, our view-through rate is 99%. They have to watch our ads if they want to see the rest of their program. So again, we're still getting the message out and we count that as a win. So below is the Recovery Connect numbers and I, I don't want to go through all of those. I will tell you, they're lower because we didn't spend. I will tell you, they're lower because we didn't spend as much on Recovery Connect. The folks at WSU do some advertising on their own, they're the ones that administer Recovery Connect. So our ads were really meant to complement what they were already doing. But again, I still feel like our numbers are really good, so we were reaching the people that we intended. So moving to the third page, I'm trying to go quickly so Lindsay doesn't get her big hook out and pull me offstage. Our goals moving forward, we really want to continue educating people about the bivalent boosters. A lot of people still have not gotten them, and that includes a lot of seniors. We want to stay prepared for a possible COVID surge in the future. We also want to continue informing folks about Recovery Connect, that there are still opportunities they can take advantage of. These are more long-term training possibilities through WSU Tech, Nonprofit Go, and some other campaigns. We will not need a full-time employee moving forward. I was the COVID P I O last year, I've moved into a new role. But with the media buyer onboard, I really feel like we can manage the communications without hiring someone to take my old spot. Possible consequences, of course, if you limit advertising, it does lessen the effectiveness. People simply need to hear a message several times before they take action. And with COVID, they may never take action. I mean, you know how it goes, there are a lot of other things at play here, politics, misinformation. But the likelihood that they will get that vaccination or that booster shot goes up if we continue advertising. If we limit advertising, it also lessens the sense of urgency and significance. Again, it's human nature, if people don't hear COVID being talked about very much, they assume, eh, it's no big deal. Vaccination and bivalent booster rates will not improve unless we keep this messaging up. COVID is still a threat, we hear all the time people getting sick. Their illness may not be as serious, but for some seniors and those immunocompromised, it can be very serious. So we feel like if we cut funding altogether, this would have grave consequences. What we propose, and it shows on the spending plan, is lowering communications budget per year, twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, from one hundred ninety thousand to one hundred twenty-five thousand, and taking that difference of sixty-five thousand per year, or a total of one hundred thirty thousand, and putting that in a contingency fund. So if COVID does spike again, we will have the resources ready to respond to that. And that's my part, if you have some questions.
Thanks, Stephanie, I appreciate it. To be very honest, I have a hundred percent confidence in our communications department, I have zero confidence in Recovery Connect. I think that that's a half a million dollars that we're spending, and I can see no useful outcome of that. And I think we could move all of that over to contingency immediately, stop that program. I do not believe that it is serving our needs. When you look, clicks don't make anything to me. Eight thousand clicks, wow, we give them a half a million dollars, we got eight thousand clicks.
Well, Commissioner, if I can, Recovery Connect is actually Row Twelve, we'll get into more details. This is just the county's portion of marketing funding that went there, but we actually contracted with them to provide their own marketing. So bear with us, we'll come back to that.
Quickly onboard the communications department, I am not onboard at all with Recovery Connect.
Any other questions?
Can you bail, Commissioner?
Yeah, I do.
I appreciate the thought of moving some of this to contingency because I think that we can still accomplish an effective buy. I'm curious if there's been thought about trying to narrow the scope of the target audience even more to some of those most vulnerable populations with a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And if social and OTT advertising is the best method for that, if there's something more direct we can do with those populations, I'm just curious if those conversations have taken place, that maybe with a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we can get even more influence at the narrowed scope of what we're trying to accomplish.
It's funny you mention that because as of the first of the year, we have actually done just that. We have really focused in on folks sixty-five and older. Because, again, once the booster was approved, there were a lot of people, a lot of seniors that got it, and then the numbers really dropped. And I think a lot of that is COVID fatigue, people just are done with shots, and they don't understand why it's important. But it's really the older people, the at-risk groups, that need to get that booster. So if we reduce funding, we will probably reduce the number of platforms that we're advertising on and focus in on the sixty-five plus, we're already doing that, but we'll do it even more.
That was mine, I appreciate that, Stephanie. I don't want to chase, I don't want to spend money chasing something that isn't going to get accomplished when we can refocus that money towards something where it's really needed.
Right.
So, and I appreciate, and you and I have had a conversation about it, so I appreciate, you know what you're doing, and I appreciate your approach to it, so, thank you.
Commissioner Howell, anything?
No, I just, I'm not spending any time looking at the dashboard lately. What's the rate of vaccine right now, or the rate, how many tests we administer? Do we have a test, a number, and a vaccine number to look at this recent?
I can't tell you the exact number of tests given, or of vaccines given. I know that the national vaccination rate is still around sixty-four percent, I believe Kansas is around fifty-eight percent, and Sedgwick County is right around there as well. Booster rates, I just checked, the CDC was saying they have a county-by-county and a state-by-state breakdown. Booster rates in Sedgwick County for all ages, less than twelve percent, for sixty-five and older, it's around thirty-nine percent. Again, that's only four in ten people sixty-five and older, so we could definitely do more, do better.
Let me restate my question, I'm talking about, how many immunizations were provided, let's say, last week?
Oh, boy, I don't have that at my fingertips, I can get it for you.
Or last month, yeah, or last month, how many tests did we actually administer last week or last month?
We'll have to research it and get back to you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I guess my point is, I, you know, it's almost at the point now where we're pretending like we're telling somebody about coronavirus for the first time, it's been around community for three years, I think everyone knows. And if they don't know, they can go to the health department to get resources and help, I don't know what to do. You look at those impressions, was it nine thousand impressions? What was the total, I don't have it for you right now, but what was the total budget for this at this point?
Initially, it was one hundred ninety thousand for twenty-twenty-three, we are proposing one hundred twenty-five thousand.
And so bang for the buck, you know, you see how much per response, how much, you know, if you look at this, like how many tests do we provide, and how many immunizations required? It could be many dollars per person, I don't know if this is, you know, if it really has an effect on what people are doing anyway. And if we did this or we don't do this, I'm not sure it's going to change people's behavior, I don't know it well. This is one of those things where I think that everyone knows about it at this point, and they've been offered opportunities, and if they don't want to do it, then that's a choice they're making, but I'm not sure we're going to change their decision. So I'm not so sure this is many well spent at this point.
I would agree that I believe people do know about vaccinations, what's available. Bivalent boosters, I think there is still confusion out there about why it's needed. And we really need to educate people about getting in the mindset that you will probably need to take a bivalent booster every year, just like the flu shot. We still hear people that say, I've had so many shots, why do I need another? So to me, that shows a disconnect between, they don't understand why this is important to battle the current variants that are out there.
So again, so this is limited timeframe, are you suggesting that we do this forever? I mean, this is a limited spending plan.
I can't say at this point, I do feel like through twenty-three and twenty-four, and possibly beyond that, we need to, I mean, we're still hearing a lot about COVID and in other countries as well, so it's still a threat. We'll just have to adjust as things happen.
Again, I'll just use the flu as an analogy, we don't spend this kind of money advertising for flu vaccine. There's a mention of it, and you can get it through the health department. But we don't spend this kind of money advertising for it. So I guess if this is going to be the normal going forward, you have to, at some point, draw a line in this hand and say, we're going to treat it like we treat the flu, in terms of how we get information after the community. All right, I've said enough, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Any other comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, some good news on Row Seven, there is no funding request here any longer. This was medical services and COVID testing for clients in our custody. The folks in Corrections do have some tests on hand today, and so they have allowed us to move those funds that had been assigned to this bucket down to the COVID surge contingency, so that if something should change with COVID, if there is a spike, then there would be an opportunity for funding to be accessed to provide those needs. So number eight is P P E for county departments. I will ask Julie to come up, but I'm going to preface this conversation with, we are handling things differently with P P E than we have historically. We have asked our emergency management department to coordinate efforts, whereas before, those things were handled at a department level. But because of supply chain issues, that was not a doable situation for COVID. And so they have handled it beautifully, but there needs to be a long-term discussion about how we handle that after COVID or after ARPA. And likewise, maybe not necessarily for the conversation today, because I do think this is a workshop-type discussion, but that P P E warehouse that we have talked about for some time now. And so I think both of those things are needs that Julie can speak to. We certainly know that there is an issue, but we also know that that deserves a larger, more in-depth conversation than what we have time to do today. So with that, I will turn it over to Julie.
Morning, Julie.
Morning, Julie Stimson, Sedgwick County, Emergency Management Director. So Lindsay kind of already stole my thunder on some of that, no, you're fine, you're fine. So there's actually two pieces to this, one is the funding to pay for the P P E. So our, with COVID, we learned that we need to have some sort of a supply, kind of ready to go for any kind of surges, for any kind of communicable disease, COVID, of course, being one of them. With that being said, some of the P P E items expire, like the gloves will have like a five-year shelf life. So we don't want to just have a stockpile somewhere, and it becomes, you know, destroyed just sitting in a warehouse. So we had to keep the supply moving, and one way we're doing that is we are supplying our P P E to like Corrections, Calcare, Sheriff's Office, some of those other non-medical entities, if you will, so that way we're keeping the supply going, and we always have a ninety-day supply. So that's one piece of it. Our budget has never been tasked with holding that financial responsibility, so we would need some sort of a fund center or something that would help us provide that service beyond ARPA. And then like Lindsay alluded to, we also have storage needs with that. Right now, we're still in our temporary warehouse, if you will, not temperature-controlled. It's not ideal for us to do long-term P P E management. That is pretty much what I have at this point, like Lindsay said, the warehouse is a whole other discussion, kind of a workshop. There needs to be a lot of discussion on what we're doing for that long term.
Can be any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, I have one question, yeah. So is the plan that I mean, we would rotate the stocks in and out, we would not, never have more than the connection to use within the, before the expiration date comes up, we would actually have a plant to use what's in that warehouse? I don't want to be buying it in this stored way because it's expired.
Correct, correct, the rotation that we would have, the ninety-day supply would constantly be used. Again, like I said, I think the shortest shelf life is five years, and we have enough supply and demand that that would be rotated through before they expire.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, Julie, thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, recognizing that you're done for now, but we'll have more fun soon. So next up, cleaning services for county facilities is similar to number seven. This is something where folks heard your comments back in February. So this is also funding that has now moved out of being earmarked for any specific use and is in that COVID surge contingency. You can see in that light gray column, there really hasn't been that much spending for this purpose, honestly, from ARPA, anyway. Okay, so then getting to recruitment, Row Ten, the bottom of the first page, and we will let Sheena speak to that.
Good morning, we had funds to cover recruitment cost, and one of those areas of ARPA was to bring our employment level to pre-pandemic levels. So we have one F T E that serves as a full-time recruiter for the entire organization. So that position works with other departments recruiters, and he is very active at job fairs. We have statistics on how much we get out in the community, and we're able to connect with the public to our jobs. We've also spent several significant amount of funding on our media presence, making sure that we are interacting with potential candidates online. We link to Indeed now, but we have several other contracts that are in place that make sure that those that are looking for positions can find us online. We do have statistics for this position in regards to our online presence in addition to the fairs that we are taking on and connecting with other departments. This position, I will say, when we do recruit, we don't recruit for one position, we recruit for the whole organization. And we are seeing an uptick in the number of hires and rehires within the organization over the past year, and also seeing quite an increase in candidates who have started applications and completed that process. We do anticipate that this position will, we will request funding past twenty-twenty-four. The risk, if we don't continue this, is we will not have staff that is dedicated to go out and do these types of services within the community and make the connections with potential candidates. We would just have to rely on our departments to do that.
I will stand for any questions.
Any thoughts, questions? Seems like that's been a good addition to get out there, because you're right, relying on the forty-plus departments to do their own recruiting is, so thank you for, I think this is a good, a good response.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell, have you? Nope. Okay, thank you. All right, Lindsay, next.
Okay, so moving to page two, the first item that's listed here is county staff remote work. So the bulk of this cost is fielded by Mike Elpers, there is a small chunk here that is able to replace some technology that was purchased with cares because we can't use operating funds to replace those. But the vast majority is Mr. Elpers, so I will let him speak to that.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, the majority of these expenses are Zoom licenses, eighty-five thousand of the ninety-five thousand is strictly for Zoom licenses. That ten thousand is kind of estimated amount for additional remote work equipment. But we don't duplicate workstations or anything like that for people that are working remotely. As the notes say, on that sheet, we periodically test the usage of those licenses and adjust the numbers as needed. You can see the current usage is on that sheet, at least as of last week, three hundred and eighty-three out of the four hundred and forty-two licenses that we currently pay for are in use. Kind of indicates that we can downsize if those numbers hold, renewal is, I think, in August. We also have twenty-five Webex licenses, which are all in use, that are part of our enterprise agreement with Cisco. The other point really to mention is COVID has really changed the work environment, not only for government and for the different departments in government, but for all the business world. Vendors don't do, you know, they don't come onsite as much, annual conferences usually have some kind of virtual offering. Attendance meetings, right, is even changed a little bit. We look at the licenses, we can see that of those four hundred and forty-two, some are specifically identified for COVID. We have, you know, a lot of departments use generic screen names and generic log-ons for those licenses. We have some that are titled like Zoom Health COVID nineteen D and Zoom Health COVID nineteen E, so that we know they're specifically in use for COVID. But, I mean, to be honest with you, and you know this, a lot of the Zoom licenses currently in use have nothing to do with the pandemic. But it helps us to stay competitive in our workforce, in our hiring, in our retention. And we believe that the need for this will go past twenty-twenty-four as well. And I guess the risk, if we choose not to fund that, is that we become less competitive in the employment market, and we have the potential of losing employees to it. So, and I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
There's time deficiencies there too, to some degree, even if you think forward ahead to where we're at administratively. The sheriff will never be with us administratively, we talk to him a lot, we meet with him and his staff a lot. Same with all of our fires. Same with all of our fire stations and posts. County's a big decentralized operation, so even past, just operationally, we need to think about this for the future.
Okay, just out of curiosity, is Zoom a publicly traded company?
We'll find out for you.
I may have to recuse myself of as in a stock portfolio or something. Just kidding. All right, thank you. I wish I would have known about it three years ago. Couldn't even spell Zoom.
You'd have known about a global pandemic.
All right.
Right.
I couldn't even spell Zoom three years ago. Okay, next up.
Okay, so next is Recovery Connect. We do have staff here to walk us through some of the metrics and the story behind Recovery Connect. So Brent will come up and try and woo you and tell you what has been done or get your direction on whether we need to scale back. Hey, I'm just throwing it out there, trying to lighten the mood a bit.
Feel like Rodney Dangerfield. When it comes before us.
We can do it however you would like.
Not today, but.
No.
Yes. Yes, we can do that, or we can approve a plan but for certain rows and then go and vote down on those. However you'd like to do it.
You know where my vote is.
Yes, I feel like Rodney Dangerfield. I feel a bit rough around here. So we all are pretty familiar with what Recovery Connect was established to do. As a result of the needs assessments that were done, the external needs assessment, those needs identified far outstripped the available ARPA funds. So the idea behind Recovery Connect was to follow some guidance from the federal government with the ARPA allocation to try to connect people to other resources that were out there. So I think Recovery Connect is in that position like a startup business where you spend a year or two writing a lot of checks, hoping that you're going to see the dividends pay off as things move forward. As Stephanie indicated, that first year with Recovery Connect was, has been all about making people aware of the program, trying to make those connections. We, through our ARPA allocation to the Public Policy and Management Center at WSU, we allocate the funds to them. Then they have a number of community partners that they're working with. So the idea was to have trusted community partners. If I go into a community that I'm not familiar with or they're not familiar with me, I can't convince people to do anything. But a neighbor might be able to connect somebody to an available resource if they're made aware of it. So they've made these connections and collaborated with a number of partners. They're the hub. These folks are the spokes on the wheel. The allocation for Recovery Connect was $500,000 per year for 2022, 2023, and 2024, for a total of $1,005,000 for the program. We have received, as you mentioned, Commissioner Dennis, a number of measures and metrics that satisfy the requirements for the public funding, for the federal funding. But at some level, and we've communicated that this with the folks at Recovery Connect, they've communicated this to their partners. These are kind of so what measures? So what? They've made 200,000 hits on Facebook. We want to know how effective those are going forward. So they're gathering information from the community partners as they go forward. And it was kind of in the early stages. They're establishing advertising programs. They're establishing a Facebook presence, establishing a web presence, a direct line and so forth, so people can contact. So it's been a slow roll, moving up to the point where now we're beginning to hear more of the stories about people that have received some benefit from a connection. We have heard of students who got support or help in filling out their FAFSA through the WSU Tech person that's in the Evergreen Community Center. Now we've got students that are enrolled after high school at WSU Tech. Hopefully, they'll take, their career will be better as a result of that. So we've heard of, through Claudia Navarro, she's talked about establishing, helping establish daycare centers in communities where that's a big impediment for people going to work. They have no place for their kids. Two-thirds of our responses from the, from the community needs assessment were from daycare and the need for childcare. So they're trying to fill these gaps, but, you know, we've got some of those measures. I would say at this point, it's more anecdotal than quantitative. I couldn't tell you today that if you stopped the program that we have received the same amount of revenue back into the community that we've spent. But hopefully, we're building a foundation through the program so that as they move forward through the ARPA expenditure deadline and then go forward, there is no expectation of county funding support at the end of ARPA, that the mechanism or the foundation is in place for this, that this would begin to bear, we'll see more evidence of it bearing fruit. So that's where we are today.
Brent, so I know the Evergreen WSU Tech connection. So that position is funded through the Recovery Connect expense?
Part of that position is funded.
Because I didn't.
So there are some positions through PPMC and then some expenses at these different community partners that are receiving, that are receiving some funding through Recovery Connect. So part of that position, I think, is covered.
Not to delve into very specific, but that particular program is really reaping rewards of WSU Tech enrollment, both at the high school level and their parents' level and the bilingual and all the things that they've done. So, and I, for some reason, I thought that was kind of under a, I think, I thought WSU Tech was, the person is employed by WSU Tech, I believe.
They're employed by WSU Tech, but one of the, but WSU Tech does receive, I believe, an allocation through Recovery Connect. It's budgeted for 2023 at $50,000. So some of the Recovery Connect funding is going. That's one of their partners that's receiving funds.
Okay, and I would agree that, I had asked before in some meeting, you know, what's the, of all these answers? Because I did like the fact we were getting calls. What's, what can I do? Is there, am I eligible for something? And we could easily send them to Recovery Connect for multitude of potential grant opportunities. And I'd asked how many of those people actually filled out a grant? And how many people actually won a grant? Kind of got blank stares, so I would agree that the reporting has not been, it's hard to validate, should we continue some or part? Like right now, if we were deciding, I'd say, well, we ought to trim back something, but at least keep funding that, that person out at Evergreen. But that's being very short-sighted from my perspective, but.
Yeah, they, Recovery Connect recently has some grant opportunity to go for.
And to the chairman, I'm sorry. To the chairman's point, we got a report on Recovery Connect with the ad buy and things of that sort this last week. But could you give us a report, send a report out of, to the chairman's point of how many organizations have received grants? What are these grants? I've seen some communications on that, but something specific that we could really look into as we're considering this portion here?
Sure. We'll get that information and continue to provide it monthly.
That's right.
Follow up on your two examples, okay? First of all, every high school has counselors. Fast food is important because without that, you're not going to get any kind of student paid. So I believe in making sure that they are able to apply using the fast food forms. But again, the high schools all have counselors that help them through that. So I'm not sure what we're spending money on in that. The second thing is that Sheena and Tom can tell you that every time I see them, I talk to them about childcare. It's one of my higher priorities, honestly. And I would much rather be spending money where that I know it's going to help our 24-hour, seven-days-a-week, 365-day employees, both in Sedgwick County, the city of Wichita, other nonprofits that have to work 24/7. I think that's a much better use of half a million dollars a year is to start solving this childcare problem. And we can do that ourselves by working with the partners and investing the money there. Thank you.
I didn't realize that part of this was funding that position at Evergreen. Can we see a breakdown of how this money is specifically being spent? On where it's going, because I didn't know that. So I wonder how much else is going on that I just don't even realize.
Sure. The majority of the funding, well, I think about half of it's going to support salaries in one facet or another and then expenses at the, at those partner organizations. But we'll get you some more detail on that.
Okay. See any other questions? Thanks, Brent.
Okay, we will follow up with some additional information on that before we bring this back. So the next one is our largest bucket of funding. We will talk about court backlog and public safety needs. And so I am thankful to have folks here in the room who can speak to that, who have been sitting through quite a bit of this conversation. So first, from the District Attorney's Office, John Waller is here to walk through, kind of as the entry point for the court backlog. We'll turn it over to John to walk through their needs.
Hey, John, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Waller, District Attorney's Office. So as Lindsay mentioned, we, our portion of the spending plan was to address the court backlog that was created when the court shut down during the pandemic. To do that, we requested 14 FTEs. Primarily, those were attorneys as well as paralegals and then some other support staff throughout the office. When we talk about success in the backlog, I think it's important to note that there really are kind of two parts to the backlog. So first off, when the court shut down, there were a number of cases that were already in the system. They're in the court. They're in our charging pipeline. They were ready to be filed. And then while the courts were shut down, there were also cases that continued to come into us from law enforcement. So crime doesn't stop. Law enforcement continues their investigations and bring those cases to us for charging decisions. So there were a number of those that happened during the shutdown as well. With that primary backlog, we've had great success. We have pretty much disposed of all of those cases at this point. So the primary backlog is very minimal, if any. Where we continue to see an issue is with what I call the secondary backlog. And so that picks up essentially when the courts opened back up. So with the courts reopening, all these cases sitting in the primary backlog, the system was really at capacity. Again, we continue to get cases from law enforcement. We have to charge and file those most serious offenses. But a lot of the more minor offenses, we would meet with law enforcement, agree to charge the case, but we would not file it with the court. We would hold those cases and trickle them in a little at a time so that we didn't overwhelm the court system. There just weren't enough judges, prosecutors, public defenders, support staff to handle that many cases when the court opened back up. So we have been doing that since court reopen. Again, the less serious offenses, trickling those in a few at a time as we charge those and then getting the most serious offenses in right away. The secondary backlog really has, we've seen minimal progress with it. It's kind of fluctuated up and down a little bit, but we're not seeing the overall decrease that we would like to see. So we've worked with the court to come up with a new solution that is called the Resolution Docket. And this docket is really designed to focus on those less serious offenses that are appropriate for plea negotiations and get those through the court system as quickly as we can. Again, those are those cases that we're kind of sitting on, trickling in a little bit at a time. The idea is we file those cases with the court. We get them into court quickly, and we have plea offers already prepared for those cases so that they can be presented to the defendants right away. And the hope is that they will accept those, and we can dispose of those cases quickly and move them through the system. That just started mid-January. I think we're some of the first court dates for that. So it's a little early to see an impact, but we anticipate over the next two or three months, we'll start to see whether or not that's going to be successful in helping to reduce that secondary backlog. Without, the need for the positions is still there, obviously, with the secondary backlog, what it is. And if we were to lose funding for the positions, obviously, we're not going to continue to make progress on the backlog, and we would probably actually move backwards. Case loads were already high before the pandemic hit. Obviously, it's done nothing to help that. They just continue to increase. And so any loss of funding at this point is likely going to just contribute to the backlog growing. We'll see, as we get through 2024, where we are. We hope that the backlog is greatly reduced, the backlog is greatly reduced, potentially even eliminated. But the reality is there's probably still going to be some of those cases hanging around that we need to continue to work on. So there's going to be a need for some of these positions even beyond 2024, most likely. Again, just factors beyond the pandemic that were already raising caseloads have just continued to impact us and probably will for the foreseeable future. So that's kind of a summary of the DA's portion. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So have you kind of combined line 14 and 15, or is this just 14 that you?
We're just 14.
14. And Judge Gearing and others from the court are here and can come up and speak to their portion as well, as soon as John's complete with the DA portion.
Yeah, historically, for, maybe for Ryan's benefit, we've had a gap at the DA support area before COVID. And COVID really, from my history, really exposed the real problem. And so we did some compensation, good compensation adjustments and some staffing adjustments. So in a way, I'm not surprised that you're saying some of these FTEs need to, will be, continue on. I don't know if the magic number is 14 or not, but I'm just sharing that from my perspective. If anybody else has comments?
Well, and Mr. Bennett and John and I had a conversation yesterday about that very thing. When is the right time to start having this conversation about what additional resources? Because we are, we've had this alternative funding source with ARPA that otherwise we probably would have had some requests through the general fund, just the normal budget process, to try and staff them up. So I think honestly, on that front, we've been very fortunate to have this allocation to assist us in delaying that conversation a little bit of time. But we do anticipate that through next year's budget cycle, some of these will be coming back to you, depending on what that need is. And we can talk through that next year.
Can't wait for next year.
They're always new and exciting.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Hall, have you anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, appreciate it.
So next, we do have the courts. And so I see Judge Gearing and Joni heading for the podium. And so they will update us on how they're approaching their ARPA allocations and all the excitement happening there.
Okay, thank you for your time this morning, Commissioners. So the backlog that the court addressed in this pandemic really addressed two areas, the criminal backlog and the family law backlog. We had developed a preliminary hearing docket. You all approved it. We had it staffed by pro tems. And the idea there was that the preliminary hearings would be done in one docket, which would free up the trial judges to get at the aged cases that were, that were sitting on the docket. And I don't know if you have the handout that we passed out, maybe not, but I can tell you that that program was a success. Our pending cases over two years have decreased 45% since December of '21. So the system is working as intended. The trial judges now have time to try cases. Having time to try cases, they're reducing the, over two years and over cases, I can report that the 18-month and over cases have reduced 43% since July of 2021. So that's been a success. The ARPA judges that were running that prelim docket have been, those positions have gone away. They are now, that docket is now staffed by one of the new judicial positions that we got from the legislature. The staff that was ARPA-funded have been repurposed to, I think, the Family Law Department. So they're still there. We've just sort of shifted them from. We've just sort of shifted them from, from one need to the other. In family law, the ARPA funds funded the equivalent of one FTE. We have how many pro temps? Two pro temps that sort of split a full-time docket. As a result of that, I can report that pending family law cases that were over 18 months in age have decreased 47% since July of 21. So that program again has had good results and has had a positive effect. Two-year-old cases since December of 21 have decreased 37%. So here again, we're seeing positive movement and, and movement in the right direction. The other area where we've, where the ARPA funding has been helpful is with domestic conciliators. And Joni may have to help me here on some of the, what, what these positions are, but they're, it, it, it's not quite alternative dispute resolution. It's mediation at sort of a higher level where the parties take their disputes to the domestic conciliator. They may present some evidence, they may present some arguments. If they can't reach a resolution with the domestic conciliators, then the domestic conciliators prepare a report for the district judge assigned to that case. And it gives the district judge some tools to help faster or move faster some of these cases through the, through the pipeline. Since we've started this program, we've had 184 cases assigned to domestic conciliators, of which 53% of those cases have been completed. So we're seeing good results in that respect. I think going forward, we like to be flexible. We've worked with the DA's office to develop this Resolution Docket. I'm very excited about the potential the Resolution Docket has. Some of that docket is, you know, to the extent we have positions, we've repurposed some positions that the state took over when we got a new district judge. So we like to maintain that flexibility to tweak and modify as we go along and to, you know, keep ourselves on the cutting edge as, as things develop. I expect that, and I guess Joni can chime in here on which one of these positions we think will continue beyond 2024. I'm sure that some of these positions will go away in 2024, but not all of them. And kind of like John says, it just sort of depends on what the lay of the land looks like in 2024 in terms of the court docket and the court backlog. Any questions?
Well, Judge, you know, during, obviously, some of this money, this is a big, a pretty, one of the bigger chunks of, of the money. And some of the decisions that, that we were able to make were, you know, buying a piece of hardware or investing in capital cost. And I remember the presentation you came at us on this backlog. And so really what we were investing in was helping you improve your process, which obviously, what to me it was, okay, I vote in favor with my fingers crossed that you're going to succeed. But this is really helpful to hear your, that you're making a dent in this in a positive way.
Yeah, we are.
So my, that's my personal expression, anybody, anybody else. And so again, we will know as this churns out how much for sure the FTE you would need or not.
And we'll, we'll keep you posted as we roll along.
And the new judge being, the, the new judges coming on from the state is very helpful, too.
Yes, very helpful.
Yeah.
Which is the, the, they're not brand new. The brand new judges go where they're, where the seniority takes them, but the new positions were allocated to the preliminary hearing docket and to the recovery docket. So with those new positions, we've been able to put resources into the areas where we think will have most, the, the, the most positive impact in reduction of the court backlog.
Now, you did get a magistrate, but I heard that they were designed, have you filled that?
So that's a good question. We're in, we're in sort of limbo with that because no one can quite figure out yet what the status of that is, whether that's a judicial vacancy, which would be declared by the state clerk, state court clerk, OJA, or whether that is a, a party vacancy that would be filled by the local party. And so I don't know what the status of getting that, moving through that thicket is. I, I keep being promised that, you know, you're, you'll, you'll get new information and we'll let you know, and, and so far, no one's let me know. So we, we're working through that as best we can.
Thank you. All right. And thank you, Joni, for joining.
Thank you both. Okay, so nothing can happen with the courts that doesn't impact the sheriff's office. So I believe the sheriff and Colonel Pollock are both here. Looks like the sheriff will head to the podium and talk about, he is actually item 17 and 18. I kind of lost my indents here on the page. So 17 is truly related to court backlog, and then of course, 18 is the CIP to install those cameras and locks to try and have some long-term effect for the sheriff using these ARPA funds. So with that, I will turn it over to you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Good morning. Jeff Easter with the sheriff's office. Thank you for letting me speak today. In reference to line 17, so we asked for 15 positions to help guard the courtrooms, guard the judges, guard juries, escort prisoners in and out of the courtrooms. Thus far, we've only been able to fill four of those positions. 11 are still open. At this point, because of the new courtrooms that have come on, we're still utilizing overtime. We're still utilizing our warrant section and our civilian or, or commissioned civil service processors to be able to fill those courtrooms. We had a class that just started here recently. We only had 36 people apply. We gave 14 interviews to the folks that made it through the process and only hired seven. We also have shortages out in the field that continue to keep coming up as part of the reason why we haven't been able to fill all 15 yet. We suspect by the end of 2024, we should be able to fill those positions. We also asked for a civilian position in our core area, which is in the jail that coordinates all the court that takes place during the day, getting the inmates down into our core area, and then handing them off to the commissioned deputies to transport them over to the courts, taking care of the food, lunches, breakfasts that need to be going in there and taking care of all that. The reason we did that was, is because we felt that if we trained a civilian well enough and that person is doing an excellent job for us, it, they get paid less than an detention deputy, so it doesn't require as much training, as much pay, and it gave us the opportunity to put that detention deputy position back in to the jail. And so that is going to be something that we'll ask to go on, to move forward with. We asked for a clerk and warrants because our extractor is broken. It's not going to be fixed because we're moving on to a new Tyler system, and we're also waiting for Odyssey to come on for the courts throughout the state. And so that person has to key in every warrant that we get by hand. We see that that's going to continue until Odyssey and Tyler, which are both Tyler products, by the way, are both brought online, and then they build some type of interface so both can talk to each other, which then the information would go back to electronics. So this position could go away in the future. We just don't know when because there's no timeline yet when Tyler's going to connect the two systems. The therapist that we asked for has worked out tremendously. That person, of course, is a licensed therapist that also has all the licenses to actually train other people. She is extremely busy, which is a good thing for us. That means she's being utilized by our personnel, and that is going to be something that we're going to ask for in the future to continue. I think that's part of the reasons we've seen some of our, there's two reasons, I think, that we've seen our retention rates go up, and we're not losing as many people. First off, the raises that this commission gave, we absolutely appreciate. And second off, they're getting the help that they need to work through the different issues of all the overtime, family issues, those type of things that are related, and they have somebody to speak with on a regular basis. And so she is extremely busy right now. So I think that's worked out really well for us. The other thing that I'll mention is, is we were as high as 127 inmates that were being held for the crime of homicide. We're now down to 22, or down to, not 22, 92. And so the court system has really started working through the process of especially the violent crimes, so much so that I haven't seen our population down as far as it is right now in three years, which we're setting at 1,192 inmates. We were up to 1,500, almost 1,600 at the time during COVID. So the system is back and working. You have to remember that most of the folks that we have in the county jail are violent criminals. And so again, last week it was 95 homicide suspects. This week it's 92. So three of them got through the, the system and have been transported to KDOC or was found not guilty. So those are the positives that we're seeing out of this. Again, most of these positions, we're going to ask for them to be retained after COVID, or after the ARPA funding is up. The next thing is installation of cameras and locks in, in 14 of the pods, as we've discussed before, what those cameras are for. I was hoping that those would be installed already, but we've talked to Andrew quite extensively, and there's a hang up in the planning process. So the plan isn't even finished yet, and that has to do with some electrician being able to put their input into it. So we are pushing them forward to at least get the plan done so we can start the construction. And so, you know, with the, the amount of deputies that we are hiring in detention is a little bit different than the commission right now, which is surprising to me. We've hired, or in the last three classes, we had a class of 10, a class of 15, and a class of 20. We have a class of seven in right now, plus two rehires that are coming back. So our numbers are looking better. We're down around 82, down instead of over 120. So those things are looking up. Also with that, we are, the locks we need desperately, which is also part of this plan, because we have so many locks that are broken and they're very old, and we've ran out of old locks to replace them with. And so once that comes to that point, we have to weld those doors shut because we cannot use them. And so the door locks are very important because inmates are inmates, they figure out ways to defeat them. And some of these locks are very easily defeated by stuffing stuff down into the backside of the lock, which then they can just pop the door anytime they want, especially when we're doing rounds. So we have personnel that are going through the jail on a weekly basis, looking at every lock to unstuff those locks. So they can't do that. The new locks would not allow that to happen. So with that, I'll take any, any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions? Sounds like you're making progress, so.
Yeah. We are. Thank you.
I ran into a couple of your field officers at an event at the, and they didn't know who I was. Well, they, but I had asked, and they said that, yeah, they just, one of your guys was a trainer, just graduated, and, and they felt encouraged that there's some people knocking on the door to come join the force.
Yes.
So it's good feedback. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. You have a great day.
Thank you, Sheriff. So next, we have corrections. Are we okay to proceed?
Yeah. She's going to join by zoom.
Okay. Very good. So Chris Morales is taking one for the team, is here to talk about the corrections requests related to court backlog and what happens kind of further down in the process.
Good morning. Chris Morales, Corrections. I can make this pretty short and sweet this morning. We have two positions that were funded with ARPA funding. One is currently filled, and it was to help with the increased intakes related to court backlog, and that has been very helpful to expeditiously get the clients into our program. The other FTE, we feel like we can let go at this point. To date, we have had no referrals for diversion cases to the DOC, but when we do, we feel like we can manage those with existing staff. So the intake position, we do see moving forward into the next fiscal year, and the diversion one, we feel like we could give up. Any questions?
Could you present a little longer?
It's pretty straightforward, isn't it?
I don't often shift a commission.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So the next line is Regional Forensic Science Center. That program has already been completed with that initial funding was for. And so now we will move to yet another big portion of the spin plan, and that pertains to the remodel of the main courthouse and then the lease here in this facility for county administrative space, as well as some remodel costs at the historic courthouse to accommodate some of the court space that's needed there. So in November of last year, you all adjusted this plan to accommodate for the increased bid cost associated with remodel of that facility. And then back in February, you all authorized the move of HR from the historic courthouse into this space, as well as the lease costs. So that is all captured here. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, we do have one increase, and that is to turn some space into judicial space for the sheriff, for those additional positions that he was referencing that are needed to move inmates between all of these courtrooms that we now will have in the courtroom since it, or in the courthouse since it is now fully dedicated to court needs. So again, that's not necessarily any kind of vote today, obviously, because of the setting we're in, but just wanted to brief you on that, and that will be a part of whatever vote we ask you to take at some point down the road after we've had an opportunity to visit with you on some of these other things that still have some outstanding questions. So I don't know if Tanya or Andrew has anything they'd like to add to that. I feel like we've talked about this one a lot of times, and so I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'll defer to you all commissioners if there are any questions on this particular line.
Any questions? No, see any?
Okay. Premium pay, no one wants to ever talk about again. So we're going to move right down to ARPA management. So Row?
That's, that's our premium pay? Just one comment?
Done. Done. Yes. That's all you get.
Sure.
Yes. We, we, some things are done with really great intentions and.
Yeah, I know. But I don't mean to make light of it.
No, it's fine. You can make, we've, I think we've healed enough that we can joke about it now. Okay. So ARPA management, this is another healthy chunk of funding. And so I have a number of my colleagues in finance here with me today to talk through some of these requests. But managing $100 million worth of funds is not easy when you consider that's a fifth of the county's annual budget. So my sincere appreciation to the folks who are taking this on because it is an arduous process, and I can't begin to tell you how stressful this can be for some of these folks. So Row 24 is technical assistants and consultants. And I think I'm going to ask if we can defer the grant update from today just for time purposes. But I do want to reference a handout that I put at your spots. It talks about a grant administration project. And that is to help us after our CARES After Action report, we got a number of criticisms and comments on how to make our grant program more robust. And it is helpful that it came through that CARES After Action review because it makes it eligible, or at least partially eligible because of that, for ARPA funds. And it also ties nicely to our county strategic plan, where our departments very kindly volunteered finance to help them with expanding the scope of grants and grants at management and administration. So not only does this line pay for the consultants to do eligibility memos for us on every single expense and help us design process and, and all of that, this is also helping us stand up a grant system that we can use, a technology solution that is actually pretty cool. And I'll look forward to showing you that some other time, as well as doing a review of all of our internal controls, doing reviews, helping us reconcile every fund balance for every grant that we have out there as we prepare to move to our new financial system next year. So some really great value that we're getting out of this program associated with ARPA. So Row 25, I'm going to have to put my glasses on here. Row 25, the ARPA grant administrator is a position that you all graciously allowed us to add to the general fund budget. And so that has actually been living in the general fund since, I think, 2022. And then I think, hopefully, they're still here. Yes, there's Joe in Hope. So we do have some grant and purchasing type support. I'm going to ask Joe if he will come up and speak to the purchasing buyer that we have that we are able to use ARPA funds for related to the extensive amount of purchases we make with ARPA funds. So Joe, can you hit that for me?
Be happy to. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. I just want to start out with just a, a story of my first day in procurement. And I think it was a piece of advice, but I think it was really a warning that the procurement director gave me, Iris Baker. She said, Joe, stay off the front page of the paper. And, and that's what procurement sees when it comes to the Office of the Inspector General and auditing. They say some of the number one issues that they will target are procurement-related. And so we are happy that we have a procurement, a buyer, ARPA buyer, that ensures compliance with the federal procurement guidelines known as Uniform with the federal procurement guidelines known as Uniform Guidance. Part of that, just real briefly, is the record keeping, and it is very detailed. In some cases, it involves an independent cost analysis. They want to make sure you have an approved vendor list, that you are using specifications that allow competition. Evaluation process is open and given to everyone, so everyone has an opportunity, and a cost analysis and closing documentation. I'll end with just one short story that's happened recently. May of 2011, in Joplin, Missouri, that tornado that went through and killed over a hundred sixty people. The federal government through FEMA offered funds, and Joplin, Missouri received funds to rebuild the public schools there. The Office of the Inspector General came in and performed an audit, and out of the three things that they mentioned, two of the three were procurement related. And the one item that they saw was one that you almost would think would not be the most significant, but it is what they call necessary affirmative steps to reach out to women owned business or minority businesses when issuing a bid. They felt like they didn't do that, and as a result of that, they are currently in negotiations to try to disallow or defund a hundred and eighty-seven point three million dollars. So that scares me to death. It keeps me awake at night and but I appreciate what's been done so far and hope that you'll continue to support that. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I hope you sleep tonight.
And speaking of Hope. And so, speaking along the theme of compliance, Hope will talk about the position that she's able to fund through accounting with these funds.
Good morning, Hope Hernandez, Accounting Director. So I have the ARPA shopper in the accounting department, and this position purchases all products and services on behalf of every single department within Sedgwick County under the ARPA funds. So this position enters the shopping carts, confirms that the products and or services were received, and then also reviews and pays the invoices. But the biggest part of this position is the compliance aspect. So as we see right now that we're going through our financial audit, these are financial auditors that we chose, but when we go through an audit later, if we do, this will be auditors that are coming from the federal government. This will be a lot more intense and in depth. So we try to keep all of the documentation. It's a lot of documentation. So we work closely with Joe and his team to make sure that we're compiling all the documentation and keeping it where everyone knows where it's at. So five, 10 years down the road, if we get an audit, we know where it's at, and we're ready to go and supply that information. So as of today, this person has entered over six hundred shopping carts on behalf of all the departments and done over three thousand confirmations for payment on behalf of all of the departments using the ARPA funds. So this position is pretty critical. Any questions?
Well, but thank you for sharing that because I don't I don't think any of us had an idea of that that many transactions. And so and we can be audited for.
Five years past the end of the term.
Five years past the.
So and we must keep every single email, every single document related to both CARES and ARPA, which is why IT, I think, hates us a little bit. But we are literally looking into the end of 2031 at this point for audit timeframe. So any other questions for Hope? Okay.
Very good, Hope.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so just to quickly reiterate twenty-eight, we have now Row twenty-eight is the CIA now called the CIP contingency. Previously, it was just the contingency. Now we're you're marking it for that specific use for now. And then Row twenty-nine is the COVID surge contingency. And again, this is one where we will ask for you all to give authority to the county manager to authorize that those dollars be allocated and reported to you if there is some kind of surge in need so that we can make sure that there's adequate justification. And so all told.
That number's five hundred thousand or so?
Five hundred, yes, but just that five hundred, two thousand. And that is literally from those rows above that we talked about. There's no other new funds that are there. And so this completes the one hundred point two million spending plan. Obviously, there are some notes that I've taken through this conversation where we owe feedback back to you. So we will get that scheduled, get information communicated to you. And once we feel like we have the majority of the questions answered that we're aware of, we will get this put on a commission agenda. And go through kind of a similar exercise.
Anticipating what? Three, four weeks from now?
I would hope by the end of March.
Okay.
But it could be as early as April, depending on what additional information you all need.
We're not under a time.
No, you all you all allowed us to to approve that plan in February, and so we've been continuing to operate off of that plan. But we do want to make sure that we're not sitting on it for too long either.
A question that some of us get off and on, so if we approve as it is today, I'm going to assume there might be some adjustments, but if somebody asked me if we approved the next plan, we'd have five point six million in CIP contingency?
So actually, the total is in that 2021 through 2024 totals column. That five million that you see is just the change from from the November plan, and that's because of the savings that we're able to be gleaned through those other programs. And so we actually would be looking at a total of thirteen point two or I'm sorry, thirteen point one million that is currently sitting in the CIP contingency. And so I will I will just remind commissioners, one of the fun things of Uniform Guidance is that if you did say you wanted to potentially fund other programs, whether that be internal or external, it has now been a year since we have done a needs assessment. We would need to reopen that to some degree and receive that information back and then go through a prioritization process, establish programs, and all of those folks would be subject to the exact same requirements that we are, and that would be much more arduous even than CARES. So just just a point of order to keep in mind. Yes, sir.
But if we needed to do a needs assessment, say we wanted to build a a storage building because that is something we've been talking about for a long time, we have to do a needs assessment again to do that?
Not necessarily for that, but I will tell you for CIP specifically, if there are projects, I would imagine this would be a project that would be beyond the one million dollar threshold. There are certain criteria within ARPA that we must comply with if we're going to do a capital improvement program. We have to be able to show the need and how it's, I guess, tied specifically to COVID, the COVID need at that time. I'm not sure that we could meet that justification, but one thing we could look at, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about, but one thing that's eligible out there would be revenue replacement. Again, under ARPA, we would have to have all the contracts entered into by the end of twenty-four and all of the work completed and paid by the end of twenty-six. I don't know that that is necessarily dual, but there could be some ways that we could look to do some some technical adjustments to try and accomplish that.
The plan was to kind of combine emergency management with the kind of the storage facility for our PPP. And to do that, we've got to get the money allocated pretty quick. So it seems to me like a decision like that, let thirteen million sit there for another two years, we'd never be able to spend it.
Agreed.
So we're going to start making some decisions pretty quick on whether or not we want to do something like another building to store that and help emergency management.
Well, and so if you recall, we did have, I think you you helped us get that endorsement letter from McConnell last year. That grant is coming back around. Our grants team has actually done some analysis to understand why that grant application was not approved. And so I think the the thought is for now, we would like to resubmit that now that we have some specific ideas of how to improve it. And so we can certainly look to ARPA. But I think one of the things we we are trying to do also is look at what other buckets of funding are out there that we can pursue, since this does have some general uses to it so that we can free these funds up. So I think that certainly maybe at that when we do do the grants conversation, maybe we can have a conversation about that if that's okay.
Wait, just one second. Let me can I interrupt?
Sure.
I need to make a really important phone call here in a minute. So I'm going to excuse, I'll be back if I can, but allow you all to have further dialogue as needed. Okay, and I'll be back if we're forced to dialogue. Thank you. Excuse me.
Thank you, sir.
To finish my question, then, as we get close to 2024, we can move money over to revenue replacement. How much total can we move to revenue replacement?
I mean, there is a a calculation that is authorized through ARPA. And so that calculation would, at this time, just during the 2021, allow us to move up to forty million. That is the the federal computation of how much lost revenue we have. Now, there are some ARPA rules that kind of make it easier for you up to 10 million to do that revenue replacement. And so we could look into those. We haven't spent a lot of time doing a deep dive into that, but we certainly can and can report that out to the commission.
Okay, well, I just don't want to just get to the end and not have some way to spend it.
No, no, don't you worry. We won't let that happen.
Okay. I can just ask a question. Jim, do you have any?
Yeah, I do. Thank you for the chance to speak. So I'm looking on the summary of this three page document. It says there's seventy-four point two FTEs. One of I guess my question is, how many of those are are people advocated we would retain after ARPA money has been expended?
We.
What's the total plan?
No, I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. What was your second part of your question?
No, the second question part of this is, what's the cost of those remaining FTEs that are going to be, you know, theoretically put into our budget after this ARPA money's been spent?
So Commissioner, I can put together a quick summary document for you and then share that back out when we come to you all at a commission meeting. I think there's some debate about that right now. I would say, based on what we've heard from the Health Department, which has the bulk of those positions, most of those will not be requested for at least not for general fund funding past ARPA. But I think we've heard from the courts and from HR and from EMS that some of these logistics positions or staffing positions will be requested past that time. So we can work with them over the next few weeks as we prepare to come to you to try to refine that number and the cost and bring that to you, although it it will be preliminary because we're not asking people to actually put that together until the 2025 budget process.
Now, I want to make sure it's clear that we're not approving any expenditures or growth to our budget based on this presentation today.
Correct.
That, you know, I'm looking at this as, you know, ARPA money was moved, and I'm not the only one that said this, I think everybody's said this, but this is considered one-time spending, not operations funding long term. And what I see presented today, probably at least twenty positions, maybe more, twenty-five or thirty positions potentially, are planned to be retained after the ARPA money runs out. So, you know, if if we if those if those requests are truly needed, they need to do that through the budget process. Did you guys just lose me?
No, we got you.
No, you're still here, sir.
Okay, all right. Anyway, my air cons are about to be dead here, but I'll just say to us that those requests that need to come through the regular budget process, we need to have robust debate and consider the all the competing, all the competing needs in the county before we actually I don't want these people to think we're approving their ideas if we even if we do it initially.
Understood, and we'll make sure that we communicate that back to folks.
All right, thank you.
Is Commissioner Lopez on?
I don't know. Did we lose Commissioner Lopez or is she?
Come on, Dan.
Okay.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Lopez?
I don't have the additional questions, so thank you.
We had we have staff meeting again next week. I think we'll move the grant discussion to them. I also had Fire Chief here. I want him to give Commission an update on the advisory board. He can do that next week as well. That way, I mean, we have, I think we just lost Commissioner Howell, but let's just defer that till next week, and we can adjourn for today unless you guys have something else.
Thanks, everybody, for being in our room today.